In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey, on January 9th, 2024, adequate notice of this meeting was provided as required by law. Additionally, this meeting is being digitally recorded and livestreamed on the Somerset County website. For public access, please email your questions to countyboardmeeting@co.samerset nj.us. The public may participate in this meeting by calling 908-231-7075. Director Robinson?
Thank you. Welcome everyone to January 11th, 2024, work session of Somerset County Board of Commissioners. This agenda and the items on it are for discussion and will be considered, since this is a special meeting, and will be considered also, we have our next meeting on January 23rd, 2024. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Singletary?
Here.
Commissioner Drake?
Here.
Commissioner Morano?
Here.
Deputy Director Sui?
Here.
Director Robinson?
Here. We will, I forgot the Pledge of Allegiance, but stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we serve for the people and the visitors and the businesses of Somerset County so that our work may lead to a greater good.
So we will move right along to our commissioner reports. And we'd like to welcome everyone to our commission conference room for the 2024 season. And we've gotten through reorg, which was held at the historic courthouse on last Friday. So thank you all who were in attendance and participated, especially to the staff who are the brain trust behind making it happen and making us look good. I also like to, again, thank the governor for swearing in the reelection of Commissioner Drake and Commissioner Singletary during their, for their second terms. And we will continue to work together and work with you all and for you all to make some, continue to make Somerset County a great place to work, live, play, and visit. And tonight's meeting delayed because of the large storm that we swept through the county on Tuesday night, so this is a rescheduling, a special meeting to accommodate us being on schedule from two, this past Tuesday. And want to thank all of the Office of Emergency Management staff and team for a job well done, for the staging, the preparation, the communications and the protocols. Had no doubt that, that you all will be at the ready, and we are so grateful for you all. And this includes the emergency responders. Again, everyone did a fantabulous job. Also, just want to remind people to be on the ready, this is for the residents, as we coming into another storm expected to come in on tomorrow and rain throughout the weekend. So we will be updating residents and in the staff and do what we need to do. So not as much high wind gusts, not as much rain, but because of the waterways being as high as they are, the water has somewhere to go. So with more rain or more water coming, we can't stop it. We also want to make sure that people are being safe and to follow the protocol and signs of the road crew and for the public safety officers, but law enforcement, if there is a road that's blocked, if there are barricades, cones that are up warning you of high waters, do not try and drive through them. It is a safety, it is an unsafe environment, not only for you, but for our responders who have to actually do the rescue. So while they are trained and skilled to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to do, if we don't have to put them in that situation, let's all be safe and do our part. Speaking of law enforcement, I want to give a plug to the third round of Police Academy scholarships we are offering in partnership with the prosecutor's office. Thank you to John, Prosecutor John McDonnell and his staff. And to date, we have trained and placed seven officers in police departments across the county, and this is to help diversify our police forces and better reflect the community in which we serve and live. Anyone interested should apply by January 19th, which is next Friday, via the county website. Look for the photo of one of our newest recruits on our homepage. She is now serving in Raritan Borough, and you can click on, click for more information. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge that we will be observing Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January 15th. This will be the 95th birthday celebration or remembrance of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and also the state and federal MLK holiday, which is a day of service, also known as a day of service. And Somerset County offices will be closed, but many of our employees will be participating in service projects and looking forward to attending the Franklin Township MLK Foundation breakfast this year, again this year. So tickets are still available. I believe their website is ftmlk.org. But if you go to Franklin Township website, you'll be able to click on more information for the MLK Foundation breakfast tickets. And that's all I have for my report. Direct, Deputy Director?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you.
I have a pretty short report today. We've got our year-end summary from our Transportation Division for 2023. We successfully completed 94,732 paratransit trips, 49,150 public transit trips, and we delivered close to 100,000 meals to people this year, 94,388 meals, which is a 5% increase from 2022. So hats off to our team over at Transportation. They continue to do great work. Also want to say thank you to the FNS Division. They did a beautiful job for the reorg, so thank you very much for the prep work and the cleanup and closeout. Appreciate all you guys do. And recycling, even with the storm, you guys managed to clean up everything and get everything picked up timely. So great job by your team in those particular towns, so please send our thanks to them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a few things. I attended a few of the reorganization meetings throughout Somerset County, including Somerville, Burnersville, Bound Brook, and Hillsborough. Welcome a number of few mayors to the fold of mayors, and welcome forward to working with them, including Mayor Gallagher and mayors of Hillsborough, Burnersville, and Bound Brook, so look forward to that. I was sworn in last Friday. I want to thank everyone who participated in that, not only putting together the organization of the whole event, which was incredible. Want to thank Governor Murphy for coming once again to Somerset County to swear me in. That was quite an honor. Part of my comments at the, at the event included concerns for climate change, and I spoke about protection of our natural lands, as well as our farms and our forests. I also spoke about the incredible Human Services Department here in Somerset County and the work that they do under the leadership of Mike Frost, who's here in the room. But really, they are responsible for some of the most vulnerable populations here in Somerset County. We can't underscore the importance of that, protecting our populations of folks, not only our seniors, but our veterans, our disabled, and, and the youth of Somerset County. So, you know, I want to thank you for all the great work that you do, Mike. And then just probably about half hour ago, just before the meeting started, I attended the reorganization of the Somerset County Park Commission. And that's another great organization I enjoy working with. Nancy DeAndrea was selected as the president of the Park Commission. Look forward to working with her. Of interest, I think you'll all be interested in, is the construction of new pickleball courts at North Branch Park. I challenged them to try to get them in, in service before Memorial Day, but I know that the contracts are just going out for bids, but we'll see if that's a possibility. But pickleball is a big thing in Somerset County, and certainly there'll be several new courts in, in North Branch Park, and we look forward to that. That's end of my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to share part of a letter I, I received from a resident from North Plainfield expressing his appreciation for the county's Office of Volunteer Services. He unfortunately had two family members who became disabled. He contacted the Office of Volunteer Services. He said a team led by William Crosby visited his home, began taking measurements. About a week later, materials were delivered. A group of volunteers began assembling a ramp for his home. He was not only very impressed with their work, but immensely grateful that the ramp was finished in time for one of his family members return home from Kessler Institute later that month. And he ended the letter by saying, "By funding and supporting the Office of Volunteer Services, you and the other county commissioners have recognized that there are many Somerset County residents like me who need assistance like this at a time when their home budgets are pushed to the limit by medical expenses associated with caring for a loved one. With that said, you are making significant difference in the lives of Somerset County residents, and I am privileged to live in this county, knowing our government leaders have the best interests of their constituents in mind. Please convey my sentiments to Lori Rome and her team. Happy New Year." So, thank you, Mike Frost. I hope you can convey that. Thank you.
If you have anything? Okay. We have a few communications. PSNG petition filed for an approval of increases in electric and gas services. County Clerk's TP to notice of fees collected for December 2023. County Clerk's TP with 2023 revenue report. An email from Lindsey Shirvanian, resigning from the Somerset County Library Commission. Ridge Oak Senior Housing Notification Availability for a Senior Housing Application Waitlist. We'll move on to new business.
24-200 is a resolution amending the bylaws regarding terms of members of the commission of the status of women.
Good afternoon. Resolution 24-201 authorizing Nancy DeVito to electronically submit the 2024 Federal Equitable Sharing Agreement and the 2023 Certification for the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office.
Okay, 202 is a resolution authorizing the agreement between the county of Somerset and the township of Montgomery for the installation of high-definition license plate readers, which will be installed on County Route 518, about 170 feet from Spring Hill Route.
24-203 is authorizing a shared service agreement between the county and the township of Bedminster for transportation services. 24-204 is authorizing a shared service agreement between the county and the borough of North Plainfield for transportation services. 24-205 is authorizing a shared service agreement between the county and the township of Warren for transportation services. 24-206 amending the resolution 21-233 to increase Section 5311 funding by $1,000 from $141,212 to $142,212.
24-207 authorizing the amendment of R. 221104, which is for the appointment and reappointment of members to the Somerset County Working Group for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2025.
208 is authorizing change number three and final payment for Tishafano Construction Corporation for the 2021 road resurfacing project for a increase of $154,461.56. 209 is consultant group modification number one to Van Cleef Engineering for the Neshanak Valley Golf Course Wastewater Treatment Plant operations for 2023, a not-to-exceed amount increase of $3,191. 210 is a consultant group modification to Verdantis LLC for their potable water monitoring for the Park Commission facilities, total not-to-exceed amount of $23,000. 211 is award of contract to Greenman Peterson, Inc. for preliminary engineering for the replacement of Valley Road Bridge over the Pacific River between Burners Township and Long Hill Township, not-to-exceed amount of $998,987.88. This is a federally funded project through the NJTPA.
And is, is that just, it's due for a changeover, or was there any damage to the bridge from a storm, or it's just due?
This, this project's been in the works for several years. We just finished concept development. It was identified several years ago, need of repair due to structural issues that we saw during inspections. So this is just the next phase of that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. 212 is an award of contract to Traffic Planning and Design, Inc. for the construction and inspection of the reconstruction of River Road Hillsborough Township, not-to-exceed amount of $225,047.2.
24-213 is authorizing the award of contract to Amwath LLC, doing business as ID Auto Shred for mobile paper shredding services at various locations. This is the first year with three-year contract, total not to exceed $12,800.
24-214 is the approval to pay a confirming order to PKF O'Connor Davies, total not-to-exceed 24-215 is the payment of claims and ratification of the same.
24-216 is authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contract to Hague Service Corporation for the fire alarm systems, for Somerset County radio towers, and the administration building exterior horn strobe add-on, total not to exceed $80,149.78.
24-217 authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contracts to multiple vendors for recycling operations such as uniforms, personal protective equipment, and other services, total not to exceed $15,400.
Thank you. Is there a motion to add the above resolutions, 24-200 through 24-217, to the consent agenda for our January 23rd meeting?
Motion?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes. We now move on to the public portion of our meeting. Five minutes, no yielding of time, no coming up a second time. You can speak on any topic. Is there, is there a motion to open to the public? All in favor? Aye. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Any emails or telephone calls?
There are no other comments.
All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. All right. We will move right into the next portion of our meeting, and I'll just say that this is a combined meeting of the Somerset County Board of Commissioners, and this combined regular work session meeting and the items on it will be introduced prior to any action being taken. Any additional commissioner reports? We have the approval of the minutes for our December 19th, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the above listed minutes?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any changes? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes. We have an appointment to the VOTEC board, R. Resolution 24-148, Lily Wong. Is there a motion to approve such resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes. We have ordinance 24-100, ordinance establishing speed limits along Bonnyburn Road, County Route 695, Wa Chong Borough, Somerset County, New Jersey, and setting the public hearing for January, okay, thank you, January 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And we also have public hearing 24-100, setting the public hearing for ordinance 24-100 for January 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. You can come back up just in case, any questions? Is there, is there a motion to pass ordinance 24-100 on first reading and set the public hearing for January 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM?
I'll motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please. Yes.
I do have one. Then is, are we making any changes to what's there now, or?
No, after our speed study, I think it was determined that we're going to keep it identical to what it was.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right.
Purpose was that it was never a county road officially, so this posted speed limit was not ours. This makes it ours.
Okay, we're just, we're not, no changes, same.
Correct.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes. We have ordinance 24-101. Go ahead.
All right. So we're talking about the ordinance for setting the speed limits along South Main Street, North Main Street, and Findern Avenue, and County Route 533 and 633. That goes through Millstone Borough, Bridgewater Township, Somerset County. And New Jersey setting it for the January 23rd of 2024 at 6:00 PM.
We also have the public hearing 24-101, setting the public hearing ordinance. Did you read that, or am I repeating? Okay.
Didn't want to steal your thunder.
Motion to pass ordinance 24-101 on first reading and set the public hearing for January 23rd at 6:00 PM.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes.
24-102 is a resolution supporting the continued participation of Prosecutor John McDonnell in the public employee retirement system. 103 is authorizing a one-year renewal of a shared service agreement with the Somerset County Park Commission for Information Technology Services. 104 is authorizing a one-year renewal of a shared service agreement with the Park Commission for Public Relations Services. 105 is, again, authorizing a one-year renewal of a shared service agreement with the Park Commission for background checks to be performed by the Somerset County Sheriff's Office. 24-106 is authorizing allocation of funding under the American Rescue Plan for construction of a new horseborn at Lord Sterling Stables. And 24-107 is authorizing allocation of open space funding for construction of a new horseborn at Lord Sterling Stables. There is a companion resolution on here that authorizes the award of the contract.
24-108 is authorizing Somerset County as the fiscal agent for the Greater Raritan WDB to apply for and accept up to $440,000 in workforce New Jersey tenet innovations funding from the New Jersey Department of Labor for the period of February 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. This is a brand-new opportunity for workforce boards only, and there's, we're proposing a lot of, I think, innovative uses of funding, including partnering with our Transportation Department, increasing, doubling our Chromebook fleet, and lots of other things that we hope will better serve this population. So we'll know by beginning of February whether we get the funding.
Resolution 24-109 is void.
This is approving the sidewalk and utility easement deed for 490 Elizabeth Avenue and Franklin Township. This is a land development project that Franklin Township has requested there be a sidewalk on the road as part of the project. There's not sufficient right-of-way to do that, so this is a dedication from that property owner to us to build that sidewalk, which we will not maintain because it's not requirement to maintain sidewalks.
That, 490, and on high school is 500. 490 is that going towards?
Elizabeth Avenue? I don't know where the exact location is.
Okay. Stretch of road that has businesses?
Yeah.
So just kind of odd. And then the high school is on 500 blocks, so just wondering. I'll drive it.
It's a couple hundred feet of the frontage there.
This came about as a request of a, yeah, development application that I think was in front of Franklin, and they required it. But to put the sidewalk in, they needed an easement from us.
24-111 is authorizing the execution of hold harmless agreement with various.
Okay, 24-112 is the authorization and execution of a hold harmless agreement between the county of Somerset and various municipalities to borrow certain equipment from the Road and Bridge Division.
So is there a motion to approve resolutions 24-102 through 24-112? Any additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes.
24-113 is authorizing an award of contract to Skazari Builders, Trenton, New Jersey, for a new horseborn at Lord Sterling Stables. Somerset County, New Jersey, total not to exceed $2,454,243. Construction should begin this spring.
Resolution 24-114 authorizing award of contract to Integra Realty Resources, North Jersey, for real property appraisal services associated with open space acquisitions and farmland acquisitions in the county of Somerset on an as-needed basis, total not to exceed $30,000. 24-115 authorizing award of contract to Ngerian Associates for environmental assessment services associated with open space acquisitions in the county of Somerset on an as-needed basis for 2024, total not to exceed $15,000. 24-116 authorizing award of contract to Prestige Environmental for environmental assessment services associated with open space acquisitions in the county of Somerset on an as-needed basis for 2024, total not to exceed $15,000. 24-117 authorizing award of contract to Shock Real Estate Appraisal for, for real property appraisal services associated with open space and farmland acquisitions in the county of Somerset on an as-needed basis for 2024, total not to exceed $30,000. And 24-118 authorizing award of contract to Sterling DeSanto Associates for real property appraisal services associated with open space and farmland acquisitions in the county of Somerset on an as-needed basis for 2024, total not to exceed $30,000.
24-119 is authorizing the purchase of goods and services under the New Jersey State Contract, which may exceed $44,000 per year. And 24-120 is authorizing the purchase of Everbridge Automated Emergency Telephone and Data Alerting Mass Notification System utilizing the Bergen County Cooperative Contract. CK0422-24, that is the reverse 911 system.
Resolution 24-121 for operations and planning authorizes the award of a contract to Motivated Security Services, Inc. for security guard services at 27 Warren Street and Richard Hall Community Health and Wellness Center, second year of a two-year contract, not to exceed $30,030. second year of a two-year contract, not-to-exceed thirty thousand and thirty dollars.
Twenty-four one twenty-two is award of contract to FFF Enterprises, Inc., to furnish and deliver COVID vaccines to the Somerset County Department of Health, total not-to-exceed ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. We're happy to report that we're able to finally purchase a COVID vaccine. We hope to have these vaccine, vaccination clinics probably the beginning of February, at the earliest end of January. It's all going to depend on when the manufacturer can get us the vaccine. The target for this particular pot of money is for an adult population. Today, this morning, I actually received some good news, is that the state, we've been promised for several months, there'll be additional free vaccine into the county. We did apply for it, so we're hoping to get a few extra hundred doses, and that, we hope to target in our pediatric population when the vaccine becomes available. Those COVID clinics will be throughout the county, open to any resident. However, our goal is to target those who have access issues, who are unable to get to their own provider, healthcare provider, or to a pharmacy, those that are underinsured or have no ability to pay for any of those services. That's what we hope to do.
One twenty-three is authorizing change number one and final payment to AB Contracting for the Spooky Brook Golf Course Washdown Building, a decrease of eleven thousand, fifty-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Twenty-four dash one twenty-four is authorizing award of contract to GenServe for the annual power maintenance agreement and preventive maintenance repair of emergency generators, utilizing the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Contract, total not-to-exceed thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty-four one twenty-five is authorizing the award of contract to GenServe for preventive maintenance repair of emergency generators, Morris County Contract, total not-to-exceed...
Twenty-four one two six, award of professional service contract for CME Associates for recycling consultation services, total not-to-exceed seventeen thousand dollars.
One two seven is award of contract for professional services to CME Associates, Monmouth Junction, New Jersey, for storage, tank, system inspection, repairs, and annual testing, not-to-exceed a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. One twenty-eight is amending resolution R twenty-two dash two-three-seven-seven due to a clerical error on contract CC dash zero-zero-four-seven dash twenty-three for automotive diesel and lubricants.
Is there a motion to approve resolutions twenty-four dash one-one-three through twenty-four dash one-two-eight?
So move.
Any additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes, but abstain from twenty-four one nineteen.
Attention from twenty-four one nineteen noted. Deputy Director Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four one twenty-nine under Human Resources is authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contracts not-to-exceed a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve. And below is the breakdown of the vendors.
Resolution twenty-four one thirty for Richard Hall Community Health and Wellness Center authorizes certification of funds for previously awarded contract to Twenty-Second Century Technologies. For Richard Hall, temporary employment of licensed psychiatric professionals not-to-exceed eighty-five hundred dollars. Twenty-four one thirty-one, also for Richard Hall, authorizes certification of funds for previously awarded contract to Adelphi Medical Staffing LLC. For Richard Hall's temporary employment of licensed psychiatric professionals not-to-exceed four thousand dollars. Twenty-four one thirty-two, again, Richard Hall, authorizes certification of funds for previously awarded contract to Lane Federal Solutions for Richard Hall Temporary Staffing for Administrative Services, not-to-exceed three thousand dollars. And finally, for Richard Hall, twenty-four one thirty-three, authorizes certification of funds previously awarded contract to Qualifax Systems, Inc., for Richard Hall CHWC's Qualifax Electronic Health Record System, fourth year of a seven-year contract, not-to-exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Twenty-four one thirty-four, authorizing the payment of a confirming order to Super Car Wash, Bridgewater, New Jersey, for car washes during November twenty-three, total not-to-exceed two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Twenty-four dash one thirty-five, authorizing a payment of confirming order to Quadient, Incorporated, out of Milford, Connecticut, for maintenance contract, total not-to-exceed six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
Thank you.
Twenty-four dash one thirty-six, authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contracts for facilities and services, total not-to-exceed six hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty-two cents. Twenty-four dash one thirty-seven, approval to pay confirming orders to Scott Testing for electric cable resistance that they did at the Somerset Patriots Ballpark. Apollo Glass had to do a repair, emergency repair at the jail on a door, and Millennium Mechanical had to replace a chilled water pump emergency, total not-to-exceed five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Twenty-four one thirty-eight, approval to pay confirming order to Colgate Paper Stock for commodities, total not-to-exceed forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents.
One thirty-nine is authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contracts to various vendors for fuel, total not-to-exceed one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. One forty is authorizing certificate of funds for previously awarded contract for vehicle maintenance, parts, and repairs, total not-to-exceed three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. One forty-one is approval to pay a confirming order to National Fuel, Inc., out of Newark, New Jersey, for diesel, total not-to-exceed fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. One forty-two is approval to pay confirming orders to various vendors for vehicle maintenance, parts, and repairs, total not-to-exceed fifty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Twenty-four one forty-three and twenty-four one forty-four are both voided. Is there a motion to approve resolutions twenty-four dash one-two-six through twenty-four dash one-four-four?
Motion.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes. New items?
Twenty-four one four five is approving a development agreement between the county of Somerset and Saritage SRC Finance LLC. Before anyone asks, that is a Starbucks at the corner of Terrell Road and Route twenty-two. It is the last piece of that whole development. All we're asking for is that six months after it's up, that they do another traffic count study and see if the lights need to be adjusted in terms of their timing, but the whole project's approved. So, there will be a Starbucks next to a Chick-fil-A.
Well, thank you for answering that, because I go by that every day, and I was wondering, what are they building there?
Starbucks.
Okay.
All right. Twenty-four one forty-six is amending the terms of office of the board members for the commission of the status of women. We're going to staggered terms. There'll be three-year terms. The challenge was to allow some continuity from year to year so that multi-year projects could be planned.
Twenty-four one forty-seven is payment of claims and ratification of the same.
Is there a motion to approve resolutions twenty-four dash one-four-five through twenty-four dash one-four-seven?
So move.
Second.
Any additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes. Come to the public portion of this meeting, this meeting. Five minutes, no yielding of time, no coming up a second time. Is there a motion to open to public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Anything from the phone?
There is nothing.
No emails?
Early in the year.
No one in the audience? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, be well, be safe.